We'll now open the Estacada City Council meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have roll call please Sadie?
Councillor Dunsmair?
Here.
Councillor Hughes?
Here.
Councillor Littkey?
Here.
Councillor Strobel?
Here.
Councillor Tenbusch?
Here.
Mayor Drinkland?
Here, thank you very much Sadie. Okay, we are at the opportunity for citizen and community group comments and I have three in front of me, so I will start off with the first one. Bennett Johnson?
Thank you, I'm Bennett Johnson. I own Fearless Brewing Company and I'm a member of the Downtown Estacada Commission or DEC and I'm not speaking for them, I'm actually just representing my own opinion. So the main purpose of the DEC is to administer the model of the Main Street USA program in Estacada and focus on the revitalization and economic prosperity of the downtown core. We actually created a strategic plan that has very clear goals and action steps toward that end. The DEC, my understanding was originally a nonprofit called Estacada Development Council, I think, and it then became a city commission. I don't know exactly why, but I'm assuming it has something to do with control of what they were doing because this is a group of volunteers and it's charged with supporting the prosperity of the downtown businesses. We submitted a negative budget to the council and the Budget Committee this year for money that would be used to support marketing activities and other things, events that would help to revitalize downtown. So I offered to present that budget to the Budgeting Committee, but Elena Turpin told me that that was not necessary because this year funds were available, but in the future that we would need to figure out how to raise money so that the activities sponsored by the DEC were self-sustaining and that the eventual goal was to then convert the DEC into a self-sustaining nonprofit, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me because why would you convert it to a commission only to convert it back to a nonprofit eventually? So in my opinion, the DEC is doing economic development on behalf of the city and that we should not be required to raise money. So especially since we're volunteers, some of the money may be raised in part by some of the events, but to expect us to raise money and pay for marketing and other activities, a bit like asking staff to raise their own paycheck or money to cover their paychecks. Also, I'm not sure that the city would want to change the EDC into a commission and then convert it back to a nonprofit. Main Street USA model does recommend administering through a nonprofit, but as a city commission, I think the city should dedicate funds to support these activities contributed by volunteer members of the DEC and not expect us to raise funds. It's hard enough to attract volunteers in Estacada, people get tapped over and over, the same people get tapped over and over to do things and expecting us to become fundraisers, in my opinion, not well advised. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next I have Kristy Blair.
Hello, I'm here to represent Campanella and the proposed park that's going in. We understand that as part of the development, a park, a city park is required. We understand that. And we have been here numerous times to talk to you about our concerns with the splash pad and our concerns with the pickleball court. In our last meeting, we had expressed these and there were representatives that agreed with us. And then there was the parks meeting two nights later and the they redesigned the park and there's still a splash pad, which you guys had all, a couple of you at least said that you thought it would go to Wade Creek and on the Wednesdays Parks and Rec meeting, it was understood that the splash pad was going to go to Wade Creek Park and then the pickleball court would be moved to where they had originally proposed the splash pad to go. We get the plans and the splash pad is still there, the pickleball court is still behind our neighbor's house, our neighbor who has an infant child. And I don't know if you've ever played pickleball, but it's very loud. It is not a quiet sport. And you are putting that in, I mean, would you want a loud sport being played in your backyard? At will. And I just feel like what we say, you hear us, but you tell us what we want to hear, but then what is done is completely opposite of what you are agreeing to with us. And it's very frustrating. We, I know it wasn't, it's not on you. We, the citizens of the Campanella Estate, were not told that there was going to be a park in our backyard. And we understand that one needs to go in, but to what extent are you going to interfere with our lives and our rights for peace to make this huge park when there's other places and the pickleball court? People can play at the high school and at the middle school, we had checked, and those courts are opened year round. So they are not closed during the summer. So I'm sure I'm forgetting a million things and my time's almost up, but that's what I have to say.
All right, the next I have on my list, the first name is Pat, I'm not sure on the last name.
I'm in the Campanella, I'm the one with the pickleball. And yes, I've walked around the high school, the middle school. There's four courts in each one of those for tennis. There's enough room for a pickleball. They play at seven in the morning. I'm retired, they have babies. Like she said, I paid extra to be on a green space. So we relied to all the time and now we're fighting, not you guys, but the parks. And really, it's not fair, but you guys want to build us to Kedah and make it more convenient for people to keep coming in and putting houses in these places. Well, how many parks do you plan on putting in all these new developments? You just randomly go, let's put it right there. It's not fair. I moved off of 120 seconds with guns, drugs and beatings to a nice quiet place. I would think it would be kind of Estacada City Court and Park to think of all the other spots around. So when we talk to people about moving out here, we can at least say, this is the place to come. Right now, I don't think a lot of us are. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the forms I have in front of me at this time. We will consider your thoughts and we all heard them. So I'm sure we'll look into this and we'll talk with staff and see where we're going to go with this. Yes, sure. That's all right. Come up to the microphone and make sure we get a form from you before the end of the, just state your name.
I'm Cheryl Nyseth and I too am a Campanella person, live on Forest Park Street. And I'd like to start off with the positive versus the negative for the green space slash park. I have been fortunate enough to witness several positive things in our community. Little things like Doze Deer standing at the footbridge, parents showing children rabbits in the grass, the geese, the ducks, an occasional coyote running through, red-winged blackbirds building their nests, people walking their dogs, throwing frisbee balls, enjoying the open space that there is available. Little kids working on their T-ball skills, older boys throwing footballs. Young neighborhood boys building snowmen for some of us who have not asked for that. And when thanked, they turned and smiled with such pride. The park is used by the community, the city of Estacada, at Halloween, Easter egg hunts, fun runs. The city, I feel, should promote the positive that they have in the park that we have now. And publicize the positive, quiet, nature park that is available to all of us and everyone in Estacada. I say that what we have is a real plus to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I was just thinking about putting you on our tourism board, that would so well, but we thank you for that statement. That was a good way to end that. All right. Is there anybody on Zoom? No? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to look over the consent agenda. Are there any questions on there that you might want answered at this time? No? So can I get a motion on the floor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a first, do we have a second?
A second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, Department and Committee reports. You've all had a chance to read out the sheriff's report. Is there any questions to that? Okay, not seeing any. All right. Committee, Commission and Lee's own reports. Do any of you have any from your groups that you attend? Joel?
The DEC met just before the workshop today. They put together a plan for the uncorked. Currently up until, I think August 4th is the calling of the drop dead day. If they don't have 10 vendors, then they're going to cancel the uncork for the year. Currently right now, they have, I think it's one alcohol vendor and two food vendors. And so it's pretty low this year. But they did have agreed to put it into the, something called Portland or PDX Pipeline to try to get vendors out here. And I believe they're going to work with some of that on profits to try to get them to work together with the DEC to get some vendors out here and get that promoted. So I think they'll be reaching out, but if it's not by August 4th, they don't have the minimum 10 vendors. And I think it's 10 vendors and one or two alcohol vendors and they're gonna cancel the uncork for the year, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm not going to comment on the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee because Erin is here and she's going to comment for me. So I don't see anybody here from Arts Commission, so I will say they had another One Page Estacada had a couple of really amazing authors come out and read, read some of their work at Harmony Bakery, it was the second Wednesday of the month. It was a successful event. It was a lot of fun and the, you know, just hearing, hearing, you know, reading the words is one thing, but hearing it the way the author wrote it, you know, hearing the author read their work, it's really an experience. So it was a lot of fun. And they're doing it every, or the second Wednesday of every month. So invite everybody, I invite everybody to come down. It's a really great experience, so.
That's it. Does Katie have anything on there? I can't see it.
I just have Parks and Rec actually meeting on Wednesday, so.
I guess Chelsea is on online.
All right, great. Then I will start off with the other commissions and we'll just go into it. Okay, I have Parks and Rec. Brett Dodger here to speak on behalf.
Before Brett starts, sorry Chelsea, I didn't know you were on Zoom. Thank you though.
Yes, my name is Brett Dodger, I'm the Parks and Rec Chair and we are in the midst of our Concert in the Park series at Wade Creek Park. We've had two of those and they've been very well attended. There's three more to come in the month of August. Due to some sunshine on the stage, we're proposing moving the start time back from six to seven, so the concerts will run from seven to nine instead of six to eight. That seemed to be okay with the artists that are coming, so we'll go ahead and make that and hopefully staff can change that on the city website and other places to have that. We'll be meeting a little bit later this week to talk about some of our hall events. We plan on doing the trick or trot event at Campanella Estates Park again. I think that's October 30th or 29th. We had a great turnout last year, hope we can see that again. We will not be discussing the park development in Campanella Estates at our next meeting because we need some more input from city staff as far as potential locations for the splash pad. I put together a brief report that I passed on to city staff that just reminds them that we've been working from our Park Master Plan which recommends the location of the splash pad. If we're going to deviate from that, we just need to have some firm reasons and optional location for that splash pad. So I want you guys to know that we are hearing from all of the citizens here today. No firm decisions have been made. It costs city money to make a new revision of that drawing, so the drawing that's on the city website is one of the previous ones that we've already discussed and let go of, so. The ball's kind of in the staff court as far as giving us a few, a little more input as far as potential locations for this splash pad.
All right, thank you sir, I appreciate that. We'll talk with staff and figure out where we're at on that and go from there.
Question here. I have some recommendations that might solve a lot of the problems and I've talked to Melanie about this. That we have a few things that's a key issue for these guys here. It's a splash pad and it's a pickleball court. The simple solution is not to have them there, so we understand that already. So let's get past that and know that we need to change that because they, it's obviously something we don't have to put in there, the green space is nice, it's not, there's no law requirement forcing us to put that in there. So we just nick those off that park as it is and just all decide on that and be done with it. And then decide where we have to put them outside of that. For example, there's plenty of room in Wade Creek Park for a splash pad. We have a horseshoe pit that is 60 feet by 30 feet that is not used. Okay, it's growing weeds in it and it's been locked up for how, I don't know how long the locks rusted shut almost, it's been for so long. Let's put this splash pad there, there's plenty of parking in a brand new parking lot we're just putting in there. We can add some more handicap spots to get people closer into the Wade Creek area. We can solve that, there's water there. There's a million reasons why we can fit there and why it could go well there. The pickleball court that everybody's talking about, we have another park, Portal Park down here, that's plenty of room down there, there's no housing near, we can put a pickleball court there. People go play pickleball in droves and so if there's any concerns for safety, there's large amounts of people there. 7A and pickleball isn't going to hurt anyone eight years in the morning. And having more people flow down through there will actually reduce some of the potential crime at that time. So it can solve everybody's problems by putting a pickleball court inside of the Portal Park, putting a splash pad in Wade Creek Park and not putting it out there. That green space is so heavily used, you even mentioned today, just now going to do the trick or trot. Why do we need to spend city money to make a change of something that already works? It's not broken. Why do we need to fix it? They love it the way it is, people are enjoying it. Why do we need to do something with it? Just leave it the way it is and put the money towards something else that's going to matter the most and let these, let these fine citizens be happy with what they got. 20% of our city residents are telling us they don't want it. Everybody who lives in there doesn't want it. People outside of there don't, isn't going to affect them. So let's put it, the things that people want, just splash pad and pickleball court somewhere, it's not going to affect the people that are, it's around. So let's just solve this now rather than going back around in circles about it. Can we get a consensus from the council right now just to move forward with that?
I really don't.
I see where you're going. Really I do and I'll get to you in a minute. We have to have a process here. We need that discussion, we need, I'm joking, sorry. You got me out of guard. Oh, never mind. Just, Katie go.
I think you were about to say what I'm feeling right now, which is that there's a process for this and Councillor Littkey does not speak on behalf of a seven-person council just because he agrees with a couple of people that he's heard from. There is a process. If we as a council need to have a discussion with the Parks and Recreation Committee specifically about this park, then maybe we need to plan a workshop that we sit down and talk with the Parks and Rec as an entire council, instead of having one councillor spouting what he would like to see changes in the park made and all the changes to our Parks and Recreation Master Plan that have been in place for longer than he's been a citizen of Estacada. So if we want to talk about this, I think we should talk about it later.
Well, that's good, that's kind of harsh, but I, I do agree, I think we need to go through the process, sit down, figure out where we're going to put everything, come back to the people, let them know where we're going to do that. And, and, and I understand that we're not going there. That's, I think that's something we have to steer from. But I'd like it to be some kind of where we get together and come up with a better plan. So staff.
Sorry Mayor, I didn't mean to almost kill you.
I know, you about killed me there. That is.
We have more here.
I'm safe, I'm not going to die yet. But yeah, we heard you, we did. And it's not going to, it's not going to come back around, we're not going to, you know, keep putting it in your face. It just, it takes time to make decisions, to find out where the proper place is to do all this. We're going to do that. Nothing's happened. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and we've seen the trick or trot and everything, it was a great success. So you know, we know a lot of people use the area and we're real positive about that. So we will discuss this, we will take care of it. So just know that we are working on this and we appreciate your input, we do. And it's not cut and dry, we have to do things to make this all work because it was on our parks plan. So this is pretty important stuff and I was a part of putting that together, so. You know, it just takes time. And we're sorry, it's been the way it has and it's been in your face and I know you, you don't think we listen, but we do. We do. It just takes some time to get everything in place, but we're, we're not putting it there tomorrow, you won't see it, I promise. We'll work on this, we'll come back to you with a plan that works for everyone. We promise. You're welcome. All right. That being done, we are at the Downtown Estacada Commission. All right, I want to put that back in. Okay, great. Thank you guys for coming.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, hey Connie, are you there too?
I am.
Okay, awesome.
Yes, I am.
All right. All right, I'm just going to go through a few things that I have written down and then Connie, if you want to add in anything, does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay. So over here at the DEC, I'm Hannah Smith, I'm the Vice Chair. So a few things we've been doing, we have been sending out an e-newsletter at least once a month which highlights the downtown businesses and events and announcements. We also did a Downtown Estacada Passport that we launched in March and it went for a few months. The deadline was May 31st and it was an okay turnout. We have some things to, to work on it. If you want to continue doing it, there was 24 participating businesses, which was great. And we were able to award three prizes to some local residents, which was really cool, who completed the full passport. We've also discussed food carts and design standards, recommending maintenance standards for carts locally. We have conducted a design review of the upcoming Estacada Commons Food Cart Pod. And we also planned the Fourth of July Parade, which was great. The theme was Remember When and the Grand Marshall was the library. They offered free parade application to all Estacada nonprofits this year and there was an amazing turnout. And it lasted for almost an hour. There was 15 floats, 61 motorized vehicles, approximately 55 animals and 11 big rigs. And we have begun planning the Fall Festival, combining Uncorked and the Harvest Festival set for September 17th. As Joel Littkey mentioned earlier about the Uncorked, we have a date set for next Thursday, the 4th. If we don't have enough alcohol vendors, then we will have to cancel it. And lastly, we have just continued to contribute to articles in the Estacada news about downtown buildings, the passport project that was launched and upcoming summer events. And that's about it.
All right, thank you.
Anything else Connie?
I just for Uncorked, Mara has heard back from vendors and I guess the biggest problem getting vendors is they don't have staff to work the event. So I think that's common. Businesses have short staff, so we're still going to try our best to get enough vendors for Uncorked. We know this was a very exciting event for us to Kedah and we want to bring it back.
Okay, thank you Connie.
Yes, thank you guys. Nope, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for your report.
Appreciate it.
All right, any questions for, for discuss? The Library Board is next on my list.
That's also Connie.
Oh Connie, okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
There? Okay. So first off, I want to say that on May 14th, we unveiled the Mobile Library. And I'm sorry, but I'm old fashioned, I'm going to call it the Bookmobile. That's just easier for me to say. So we had the unveiling of the Bookmobile and the special guest was Carrie Hubbard. And if you haven't seen the van, I hope you get a chance to see it because she designed it and it's one of the most creative, inspiring vehicles I've ever seen. So that was exciting. As Hannah said, the Grand Marshall for the Fourth of July Parade was the library staff. And seven of the staff were in the parade along with some of their kids. And along the parade route, they passed out 200 July 4th pinwheels. And they also distributed Pacific Northwest Wildflower packets that they received as part of a grant to present programs related to promoting bees and other pollinators this summer. The Bookmobile, I forgot to mention, is going to be at Farmer's Market, it's going to be at various preschool and kindergarten events to support getting kids signed up and also the summer reading programs and other reading programs. The library staff is busy with summer reading events and programs. On August 2nd, the library is hosting a National Night Out event at the library. The National Night Out is a family-friendly, community, crime prevention and safety event that we are partnering with Estacada Fire, Chakmas County Sheriff. So August 2nd, I hope you're going to participate in that. At the next Library Board, we're going to discuss some future visioning for the library, what new projects and services we should be working on. And just kind of see where we can go because the community is growing, how to meet the needs of the community. And then lastly, I just want to again thank Library Director Michelle and her staff, they're incredible. They put in an incredible amount of time and effort into meeting the needs of the community. So Michelle, thank you. And also thank you to Councillor Paul Strobel. He actually made a meeting that I totally forgot about. So thank you Paul for being there. Any questions?
No, I think you covered it all Connie.
Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Chelsea, I guess you're here for the Arts Commission?
Yes, I am. I am. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Thanks Jerry, but I had a lot more to say than just one page, so bear with me. We have. I appreciate, I appreciate all the kind words about One Page, honestly, thank you. Speaking of One Page, that has been going on all year and it will continue through December. So we have so far had five events.
So we have so far had five events at Harmony, which have included Oregon Book Award and Oregon Literary Art Fellowship winners, a national endowment for the arts recipient, authors longlisted for the National Book Award, and poetry fiction and nonfiction award-winning writers. We have had two events at the library, which are family nights, and those have included award-winning authors of middle grade and young adult literature. And so, and one comment I wanted to make is, all the writers who have come have been so supportive and encouraging about this program in Estacada and really excited about the project. Coming up, the second Wednesday in August at Harmony, will be at Harmony and in November and at the library in September and December. So we will have more bestselling and award-winning visitors, including Oregon's former poet laureate, Kim Stafford. He'll be one of the readers at the November event. And in case you don't know, the way One Page works is, we do invite two featured readers, but then we also have 10 open mic spots. So anybody can come and read one page of their own writing, whether they write poetry, fiction or nonfiction, everyone's welcome. And, and, and you also don't have to be a writer, you can come and just be an audience member and enjoy the complimentary snacks and, and the book drawing at the end. So we hope to see more folks there at the next one, which will be on August 10th. Other things that we've had going on lately, we got the new library hanging system up so that we can switch out art exhibits more easily and with less damage to the library, thanks to Carl Hoggins' work. The first show went up in March and the next one will be coming up soon and that's going to feature work from Reva Wartel on the planning and production stages of the upcoming Art Back mural on Dollar General. Heidi Prokop, our Commissioner, one of our new Commissioners, has been working hard with Elena as our social media liaison to help spread the word about our events. And we have had Commissioners attending meetings of other Commissions in the hopes of getting some more cross-commission events. Carl also just made up another batch of the New York, London, Paris Estacada bumper stickers, so if you don't have one yet, be sure to get one at our next event. We're asking for a $3 donation for those. The spring events that we did, since unfortunately we weren't able to give you the last update, I'll just run those down quickly. The Lager Coloring Contest, we learned a lot from our first coloring contest and had more than double the number of entries, over 40. Nicole McMerrick headed that up, one of our new Commissioners with help from Tina Ruiz. World Collage Day and Art in the Park happened on May 14th, which included a collage contest and exhibit at the library with half a dozen children and teen submissions. And the Art in the Park Station was really fantastic, there was button making, a space for collage making and a large ground level canvas for younger kids to paint on. Had a ton of visitors and those events were headed up by Nicole and Deborah Vandetta, also one of our newer Commissioners. They attended WhatsApp Estacada Open House and met with neighbors and Commissioners. So coming up, we are co-sponsoring a professional face painter with Parks and Rec at National Night Out, which you heard about from the library. The Chalk Walk will be back and the chalk is being handed out as of today. It's on a first come, first served basis to any kiddos under 12. You can get chalk at the library or ArtSmith and starting tomorrow, there will also be chalk at Yo Treats. So folks can go and pick that up there. It's being coordinated by Deborah and will coincide with the mural painting event, which will include a labyrinth. Carl is working with Deborah to get artists to decorate downtown again, in addition to the handing out chalk for everyone. We've also got an art and music crawl coming up on the first Friday of August, the 5th. And most, last count, we've got five groups, musical groups, around 10 artists, seven venues and business partners confirmed. Flyers are being put up, there's a map in the works and a banner being made, that's being headed up by Tina with support from Nicole and Heidi. It should be a lot of fun and hopefully ease some of the pain folks have experienced by missing out on summer celebration. This is our baby steps towards getting back to a summer celebration level event. In the fall, we've got our annual planning session is scheduled for September. Another coloring contest will be sometime mid-October to mid-November. We will be supporting the Dia de los Muertos event put on by the library. And the last thing is, we wanted to express our endless gratitude for all the hard work that Emily Moon did over her many years of service as a Commissioner and Champion for the Arts in Estacada. She has retired from the Arts Commission, she will be greatly missed. And as a result, we have an open position, the application period is closing in just a couple of days and we are looking forward to getting to know the applicants at the next meeting. Phew, any questions?
So, that's a lot of stuff. But that was a busy person. I, I have a couple of questions for you. Can you walk us through the process it takes to get how a mural is selected from the, each year and how you get to the point?
So, sorry to interrupt, but the murals aren't, the murals aren't done by the Arts Commission, the murals are done by the Art Back cooperative, not by the Arts Commission.
We don't, nope, we don't pay, we don't contribute money to it, we don't participate in the planning process. One of our Commissioners is on Art Back, which I think is where some of the confusion comes from, but Art Back is a completely separate organization. They, they do all of that on their own.
Okay, so the murals have nothing to do with the city then, correct?
It has nothing to do with the Arts Commission, I'm not sure if it has anything to do with any other part of the city, but the Arts Commission doesn't.
That, that is correct, the city is supportive. I write letters of recommendation for the Art Back when they're seeking grants from other organizations, but other than that, the Art Back is standalone from the city.
Just wanted to get that clarified, thank you.
It doesn't look like that, because you would think something that fantastic has to have like the backing of the local governmenters, but they are phenomenal, they make it happen and.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah, great.
Excellent, all right, cool, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Chelsea? Chelsea, we appreciate your report and we look forward to the next one.
Thank you, thanks everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we are at Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Erin, I'm sorry you have to follow that one up.
We hold a candle to that. Erin Smith, thank you for supporting our work. I'm just gonna give you a rundown of the different things that we worked on over the last quarter. One is we approved our committee charter, which we're happy to share out. We also were submitting feedback for the housing needs analysis, that was a request that we completed. We've been working with the Transportation System Plan, or TSP, as it'll often be called, on their public engagement plan and have determined a couple of strategic places to formally meet with the TSP staffers to kind of create that feedback loop to ensure voices are being heard and no stones are left unturned in the plan. We also, which you'll all remember, participated in a joint meeting with City Council to go over the Pilot Equity Lens Tool and we look forward to continuing that conversation. We are in a lot of conversations with the Arts Commission and supporting them and their work and the Art Back mural event when that happens as well. And then we had a committee vacancy that it was filled tonight. Okay, I saw it on the agenda, but we skipped over that part of the agenda, so I wasn't sure, but great. So we are back up to 100% and look forward to having Brittany join the committee and continue on this important work. Any questions?
Thank you for that, any questions? All right.
And thanks Jerry for always participating.
Even when nobody else shows up.
All right, we are at the City Manager's Report.
Hey, great, I just will try to make this brief, but I have a few things to share. First of all, I wanted to take note, everybody to take note that the Public Works Department has been very productive and they have got some speed signs installed up, these are portable, the signs that reflect how fast you're going when you're driving. So they got a couple of those and they can be moved around to a variety of neighborhoods to try to help with those of our community who like to go speedily down the street. They said they were getting a lot of thumbs up when they were installing the one down on Lakeshore. And they have another one that they'll, they're planning to put on Cemetery Road for a while and as I said, those are mobile, so they'll be moving them through the neighborhoods, yes, more thumbs up. And so just wanted to share that, they also, the Central Line Painting Through Town on our Main Streets in Town got done, so those are freshened up. They, that excavator that got approved on the, in the consent agenda for purchase was actually, they were able to get that for a little over $14,000 less than they had anticipated. They found three quotes and took the lowest quote and so they, it still is, it's a spending piece of equipment, but it'll be very helpful to them. And they, it did come in about $14,000 under what they budgeted for, so that was great news. Kurt MacLeod, our City Engineer and I have been, and other staff have been continuing to move forward on expanding the water treatment system or the water distribution system with the high-level reservoir that we need to construct and with the new wastewater treatment plant that we need to build. And so he wanted to, he wanted to, me to share with you that pretty soon we'll be going out for an RFP, for an engineer to work for us on that wastewater treatment plant. His firm is not large enough to manage that size of a project, so they will help us to go out, put out an RFP and come up with an engineering firm that can help us to go through that process. So. The garbage franchise that, that we administer, we typically review rates following the county's research on that, they do a very thorough rate review each year prior to the summer. And so I will be, I've looked at that a little bit, I also need to review it a little more deeply and then I'll be coming to the Council for a recommendation on what type. We typically try to follow the county's, their research and their decisions fairly closely so that we do have more density here. So it should be, I feel that's a benefit to the, to the garbage companies that are, and recycle companies, you know, that are picking up in town, they're not driving a mile and picking up 10 houses there. You know, there's density here, which I think is a benefit to them, but I will be doing a rate review and bringing that to you, hopefully at the next Council meeting to make a recommendation, see what you think and let you decide on that. And then I did want to go over Brent Doddrell, this is like after the fact now, so after much discussion tonight, but Brent Doddrell sent me a letter as Chairman of the Parks and Rec last week, but I didn't get it processed quickly enough to get it into the packet, so I can email that out to you. But I just wanted to encourage everybody who was here who spoke and some of them have left, so maybe pass it on. But changing direction on a decision that has made is very slow. Anything we do happens slow and it can make you a little crazy sometimes, but the good thing about it is it lets people be involved. Because if we had just, for instance, taken that master plan that was done four years ago and jumped in on it without reviewing it again, putting together that, the potential design and paying for that picture, the image, so that people can see the image and go, wait a minute, I don't know, but that catches people's attention. And so it, it's a slow process, coming to a council meeting when it's still not even, it hasn't even come to the council yet, it's still in the Parks and Recs. It's, it's in their work zone right now, they're the one that has to make the recommendation first. And so kind of just coming to a council meeting and making some recommendations, even though they sound good, and we can't just snap and, and turn that vote around, it takes a little while. So don't be discouraged, it takes a while to, to get things going forward and then it takes a while, if we're gonna turn it, it's gonna take a while. And so I just want to encourage people that they're not being ignored, but we, it's also not fair to the rest of the community to make a snap decision and I appreciate you. I know it's hard to sit in front of somebody who's very concerned about something and then, and have some great ideas that could potentially fix the whole thing, but to just say we're gonna hold off and like Mayor said, you know, we're going to go through the process. So just be encouraged about that, but this letter, I will send it out to the Council, it's to the Council, I just didn't get it in the packet. It notes that the Parks and Rec has been tasked with proactively planning and developing and maintaining quality parks. Not maintaining in the fact that they're out there with the lawnmower, but making sure that, you know, we have the capacity and that we're on track to, to keep those well. The park in Campanella is designated as a community park, not a neighborhood park, and so it's a park that's designed for the entire community, which is something to really take into consideration, because it will impact the people who live in that community, in that neighborhood, but it's designed for, for everybody. There was certain elements that were in that park in the plan initially, they've revised some of those and we have asked Stephen, who was doing the drawings of that, to make multiple revisions. But it's not, it's not done yet. So there are things that have come up around the park, traffic concerns, safety concerns, privacy concerns, and there's a lot more details here, but noise concerns. And with the exception, we, we feel that we can, or and Brett has expressed confidence in the Parks and Rec, that we can manage the safety concerns in a variety of ways. The rest of them are all, they believe valid concerns that need to be considered when you're putting that in. So the master, the Estacada Park Master Plan adopted in 2018, does, it does direct that a spray park or water play feature will be added to Campanella Estates Park. It's an eight-acre park, some of that's unusable in the middle, because it's in the, kind of that wetland area in there. So that has been designated, there was a lot of public process that went into that plan. And so the concern is though, now that there's kind of been, there's a, we're not going, we're not going straight through the process anymore. It's, it's jumped from Parks and Rec, waiting for a recommendation from them, to people coming and talking to the City Council, asking for them to go ahead and make a decision now. And it's like this, it's kind of a little muddled, I feel like, so we need to get back to waiting for the, in my opinion, waiting for the Parks and Rec to make their decision and their recommendation based on. I think they've done a great job of accepting all the feedback that is coming, trying to process through that, making recommendations for the design of the park. But they are requesting that we would, that staff would be able to do some more research. And so that they have well-substantiated answers to base their decision on. Questions like, does a splash pad fit in Wade Creek Park? Logistically, it fits there, if you measure it out, you can fit it. Is that the best place as far as what else goes? If you, you can build the splash pad, but what goes around it, you know, is that, is it gonna be feasible to have one more element? That's a big draw in the summer months put into there. What are the reasons it wasn't initially put in Wade Creek Park? Are those no longer valid? Has the Library Director been asked to weigh in on the decision? Is it a good fit to have splash pad for little children right next to the skate park with the older teenagers? Is that a good mix? So there's, they have a lot of questions, they'd like me to do a little research. That will probably entail reaching out to somebody who, you know, who might be an expert in that. We've had MIG weigh in, they were doing the Parks Master Plan, they didn't feel it was a good location. And then Greenworks, who was doing base three of Wade Creek Park and that design, they didn't feel it was a good location because of just the compactness of that park is, is why. And maybe they're, you know, maybe they're living in a perfect world of massive parks and lots of space and, and maybe we don't need that. Maybe we just need a place for some moms or dads to sit in the grass and let their kids run in a little, a little area, which that could totally be the case. So if you want me to, to look into it more, to get those, you know, more answers, I'd be happy to do that. I feel that we kind of owe that to the Parks and Rec to answer their questions. If, but I would, I'll just, I guess I'm, what do you guys want to do?
And I, I think everybody on this table is in favor of looking at it in a smaller sense. Let's take a look at the bigger picture here, the almighty splash pad. We can still do the splash pad, our city is growing so fast and there's so many locations coming online that we're gonna be able to do a splash pad. So scaling it back to something like you just said, where parents can sit on the lawn and watch the little kids get wet and the thing is really what we're looking at here now. I don't think it's even a splash pad per se, it's just a little water feature, right? And it will fit in the area that's there, I mean, it's a very large space and it's just going to waste now. So looking into that, I think is where we, I mean, am I right in saying that, would you be comfortable?
I, I think though what you're asking is, is taking a broader look to see, not, not just this area, how we can get one in there, but where, why one wasn't placed there? Where could something be placed, you know, to have a, to have a higher look at that?
That's, that is kind of what I'm asking for, to make sure that we're looking at the whole picture. That's, that is kind of what I'm asking for, to make sure that we're looking at the whole picture. Yeah.
I'm, yeah, I'm in support.
And first, I just want to say, I do understand there's a process to everything there. And so I wasn't trying to step outside of the process, but I think we're mainly here to get the, that push of the people across. And so I wanted to make sure that that was put across earlier. But yes, I, I agree, looking at, looking at it and taking a look at, you know, what needs to be there. It may have been something in the Parks Master Plan back in twenty eighteen, but it doesn't mean it fits today. And so let's take a look and see maybe why it wasn't there now or what we can change in the concept to make something fit there. Like you said, something smaller or something might be a good idea. You know, and that, I mean, like, I think it's more than just a splash bag too. So I think it's, you know, looking at the, the other big elephant on their list, there was the, was the pickleball court.
Yeah. And actually, I kind of, I think I skipped over that because there originally was in the plan splash pad, fully accessible play area, fenced off leash dog park, three pickleball courts and some additional off street parking. And it's been part down to a splash pad that was relocated to make less of an impact on the neighborhood, a bit farther away from the homes. A fully accessible play area instead of three pickleball courts, just two, some additional off street parking. They took out the off leash dog park. Couple of years ago, people were calling in and asking a lot about that, but apparently it's not a, not a big deal right now. And so that they took out, yeah, they took out a pickleball court, took out the dog park and are considering, you know, is what, I, I don't know if they're I think the pickleball courts are probably still on the chopping block too, that they could go, but I haven't got that directly from them, but.
I think the big thing that I've been trying to say is if we have other options, we really should be exploring them rather than just going to what we originally put in the plan four years ago. If there's other options that can solve everybody's problems, we need to at least consider those and understand why then we may not be choosing them. Before we
If we're going to deviate.
Exactly, exactly. And that's the thing is that, and their, their thing is that there are other options on the table. So we need to be looking at those. I think is what I've been trying to get across.
Yeah, it actually, something that the gentleman from our workshop said resonates with me during this conversation. When we're putting together our TSP, it's really important that a lot of the voices and a lot of the involvement happen or the voices are heard now at this level. Because what tends to happen is we spend a lot of time as a city, putting in these processes and, you know, making these plans, whether it be the TSP or our Parks Master Plan. But it's not until somebody is tearing up your road that you actually hear from the people on that road who are going to be affected by it. I really think that we, as a council, owe it to the rest of the citizens who have been counting on amenities like this someday being brought into our town. When I was personally going around doing my petition for council back in two thousand and eighteen, that's all I heard was, when are we going to get the splash pad? When are we going to get the splash pad? When are we going to get the splash pad? We owe it to our citizens to really bring them a splash pad that they deserve, not to necessarily scale it back to a fountain, but to really bring them an amenity to our city that they've been asking for, that we've been planning for. So honestly, I would really, really like the staff to help educate not only everybody in the city, but also everybody on this council. How much public involvement did we get when developing the Parks Master Plan that's only four years old? Because at this point, you know, we're working on the same thing with our TSP. Is our TSP that we're working today on going to be outdated in four years? Simply because we started to dig up somebody's road and now we're starting to hear from them. We really owe it to all of Estacada. Yes, we owe it to the people in Campanella to explain to them why something is or is not going to work. We also owe it to the rest of the citizens of Estacada who have been begging for this amenity for over a decade, who have done fundraisers in the past. I mean, we really owe it to them to bring them the amenity that they want. And I'm sorry if people in a certain area of town don't want to share their slice of the city. I live in the Lake Shore neighborhood and in a couple of years, I'm going to have to share my slice of the city with a bunch of people who want to come and access it with our brand new dark dock that we've been again, working on for years. And I know that eventually I'm going to have to share my slice of the city in a way that I haven't had to. And we owe it to the rest of Estacada, though, to bring in that access to the water. I'm going to have to share. And I'm sorry, Campanella Estates residents. There's a balance that we have to juggle here and we owe it to all of Estacada to look at it from all the sides. And so honestly, if we're going to be having this conversation, I really want a piece of that to be education of the steps we've already taken, the involvement we've already gotten or the input we've already gotten from our citizens. And then that way, when we're having this conversation, they can see exactly how long we have been working on this and how many people have been involved prior to this moment. I guess my rant is over. I'm just, everyone needs to learn how to share and get along. That's all I have to say.
The time for speaking, we can't speak out of turn. I'm sorry, but there's a time for that. I know it's upsetting.
It's end of the meeting.
Yeah, it's into, into the meeting. Okay, well, we'll get that.
You can, you can fill out a form and speak at the
Yeah, I've got another one coming up. So if you
I'm kind of scared to speak now, but so again, as Katie said, when, when, when we were running back in two thousand and eighteen, you know, when we decided to throw our hat in the ring and run to run for this council, that was the, that was the biggest, that was the biggest concern is when are we getting our splash pad? So, you know, I mean, the, the meetings coming up to that point before that, you know, during that whole Parks Master Plan, it, it was very similar to this, if not, you know, even more, you know, even more controversial, even more. I mean, everybody wanted that splash pad and there's been so much public outcry since then. Every single time a phase of a park gets finished, where's the splash pad? Where's the splash pad? So, you know, I do understand that, you know, the, the, where the splash pad was designed to go on that drawing might not be the best location and I definitely do want to look at other places. But as far as having a splash pad, I, I, I mean, one of the things that Katie said that I do agree with, I don't want to turn it into a small water feature. I want to, you know, Estacada has been asking for this splash pad, has done a lot of fundraising in the past for a splash pad. And, you know, we're fifteen plus years into not, you know, not getting the splash pad. So, you know, I'm not saying put it at Campanella, but I'm saying we do need a splash pad and not a water feature. So we need to figure that part out. I'll give you a quick mayor. So, and I, I don't think anyone is saying not to have a splash pad. It was mentioned to consider changing the layout and how it works, I think, to make it fit. But, you know, I'm right there with you. I think we can fit a full sized splash pad in there, just like we wanted to put over there. But the I, I think the biggest thing that we're trying to say and what the Campanella residents are asking to say is there's other options and that for us to consider it and that we may have been, it's, it's okay if we put it in a plan before, you know, people make mistakes and sometimes we can correct them along the way. We're seeing that
And I'm not disagreeing with that.
But yeah, and then so all, all we're looking for is just trying to find a solution that fits the best for everybody. Let's get it, let's get a splash pad, let's find a place that doesn't have as much of an impact and move forward with this. That's what we're trying to figure out, I think. So that's
So you think there, so should I, I guess my question is, just to wrap this up, is it's, it will take, it will take time. And, and there's a lot of different opinions about how to, you know, what's going to be best. And so if, if it's all right, I would like to do a little more research and find out, is there other alternate locations that could be just as good? Or is there not? Do we have, you know what, maybe there's, and there's other compromises that we can make potentially that would make it, if it does have to go in Campanella, if that's the best spot for it, you know, maybe there's other things that can, that can be worked on, like the fences in the backyard. I know that's a HOA issue. But as the HOA gets transferred to the people in the community, maybe they would let us, you know, fix those fences as we put in, if we do put in more amenities in the park. I think there's some things that we can work together on to come out for a positive outcome. And we may have to give up some things and hopefully we can not, you know, we come up to a good solution. So
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay. All right. And I will send this letter out to you requesting that additional information. So you can all read it and I do appreciate the work. I don't think anybody signs up for a city committee. I know city council, you know, you might be on the hot seat. But I think the city committees, they just really want to help out. And I think Parks and Rec has done a really great job of trying to, you know, weigh things and try to figure out what's the best path forward for their recommendation. And hearing all these reports from the other committees has been phenomenal. They're doing a lot of great work out there. So that will end my report and I will work on getting more information for what our options are.
I have a quick question. Where's city manager? How often do we review our master parks plan?
Often do we review it?
Yeah, for maybe any amendments or changes.
They're, they're supposed to be like a twenty year plan, but things change more rapidly. And so ideally, probably in, you know, every ten years. Our community changed a lot. So
Maybe with the, we've almost doubled in size in like the last few years. Maybe it's, we should put that up on the the block to review it again, make sure it still fits with what we looked at four years ago, because four years ago and today are completely different because of how quickly we've grown. With everything that changed with COVID, maybe we should consider looking at it, make sure it's still viable.
We could do, I could put it on the list. It's a long list right now. Put it on the list. Yeah, to, because we, and by the time we get to it, it probably will, you know, maybe between seven and ten years, we should be reviewing that. Because we'll have communities that aren't even built today that will be built by that time. And, and so I think we have a lot of work ahead of us. Thank you.
Right, we're now at council business. First on council business, I have an ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash zero one two, an ordinance amending certain chapters entitled ten vehicles and traffic of the SK municipal code. I have that up to you.
Okay. This is coming at the request a couple of years ago. I've been procrastinating on this a little bit to change our, our city code regarding towing vehicles without prior notice. And this will provide a tool to law enforcement and code enforcement for removing nuisance vehicles. It is not something that we take lightly to just go around towing cars. I know in some cities, if you park in the wrong spot, you come back two hours later, your car is gone. And that is not what this is intended to be for, but there are some situations where if a vehicle does is not, does not have current registration tags, it would be, that would be a good reason to go ahead and tow that a nuisance vehicle. There's again, using it carefully, but giving law enforcement and code enforcement a tool if needed. And so that's what this is designed to do. Right now, the city code allows a vehicle to be towed if it's stolen or if it has three unpaid parking violations and then is parked once again in violation of the city code. So this, that, that is, you could just leave it like that if you want to, but I believe that there are some situations where it would be helpful for our deputies especially to be able to have that authority to tow a car. And so what I did is basically I rewrote part of it into our code so that it's spelled out really clearly and you don't have to look elsewhere to read it, but then also adopted the entire county section of towing without notice. And so that, that includes their process for how they keep track of the vehicles, how they notify owners, things like that. So that is all included in there, but then also is spelled out. Like when the, when the vehicle registration is, as indicated by registration stickers or registration card has been expired for ninety days or more, the vehicle and the vehicle is required to be registered when operated on a roadway and is parked or being operated on the city roadway. They may cause it to be towed and stored at the owner's expense. So they can't come on, it doesn't say private property. Unless it's stolen, it doesn't say private property, but if they're operating the car, parking the car in the city street, then it could be towed. And then also in city parks, if it's left, we've had some issues where nuisance vehicles are being parked or left overnight in our city parks. And there's a process that has to go through, which takes some time. And so this would allow that to be, you know, they could tow them out of there if they're parking overnight in city parks. And we and then just basically grant the last I letter I, as the city adopts chapter seven point oh one of Clackamas County Code, vehicle parking and towing and grants consent to Clackamas County to administer this chapter. And then also notes that everywhere it says county roads in there, it would apply to our city streets here and to other properties that are owned or maintained by the city. And I, I think it's our attorney took a look at it. He, if he, he said, as long as it's following the Clackamas County rules, which is what our deputies are used to working under. So it'd be very familiar to them. So I'm confident that this is good, but it's up to you. If you want to leave it as it is, we can, if you'd like to adopt this, we can also do that. I also included in here an update. And I did what I said I wasn't going to do, which is not give you the full code. So if you want to see the full section of this code, it's chapter ten point two zero. It starts out a citation on an illegally parked vehicle. And then the next section is failure to comply with a traffic citation, which Councilor Dunsmere and I were in a conversation about this today. Like, well, that sounds like a traffic ticket, like a speeding ticket or any kind of a ticket. But based on where it is and the way, the way it's phrased in here, if the operator does not respond to a traffic citation affixed to such vehicle, which is one illegally parked vehicle. And so it's, it is, even though it says traffic citation and we could scratch that word if you want to, it's, it's referring to the parking citations. And here it says, if you get a parking citation, probably good to take note. If you don't, if you don't respond to that within five days, the chief of police may send the owner a a letter informing them of the violation and warning them that if they disregard the letter for five days, they'll issue a warrant for their arrest. And so it's, yeah, so watch out. So this was revised, I revised that to say something more that we, that we could manage better. If the operator does not respond to traffic citation affixed to such vehicle within a period of fourteen days, that may be too, too long or too short for a year, but you can make a recommendation. They can respond by requesting a hearing or paying the ticket. Then that will, if they don't do that, it will result in default of the fine amount and the fine will be doubled. And then the court clerk may send the owner of the vehicle to which the traffic citation was affixed, a letter informing them of the violation. And so hopefully that, that violation stuck to the car. If the wind blew it off or whatever and they, they never got it, our court clerk can mail them a letter, letting them know about that, but they're going to have a warrant issued for their arrest. It could be a good tool to have in our pocket, but that was, that was my recommendation there. And so you guys can discuss, ask questions, make revisions if you want to.
So what are you looking for tonight?
Does anybody have any questions?
I think it's good.
And if you want to, if you want to approve it, it's, you would move to approve the ordinance. And then we also have a second reading of it at your next meeting and it would go into effect in thirty days after that.
Yeah. Can I get a motion on the floor, please?
Move to approve ordinance two zero two two dash zero one two and ordinance amending certain chapters in title ten vehicles and traffics of Estacada municipal code.
Yeah, but first, do I have a second?
Second.
In person, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priority Ballot.
Okay, I'm going to hand these out. Or do you want to hand them? Okay, so every, every other year, the League of Oregon Cities, just for reference, they'll send out, they put together some committees and to work on legislative priorities. And then they send those out to the cities. We get one vote. And so that is why I forwarded them to you, collected your top five priorities. And this is the result of those top five. They have just for and if anybody in the, in the public would like to look at that, it's in the pack, the priorities that the LSC is working on is in the packet. So you can read through those. But the ones that rose to the top for this council. But the ones that rose to the top for this council. Were infrastructure funding to support needed housing with three votes. Community resiliency and wildfire planning with four votes. Protecting public employees and officials with three votes. Transportation safety enhancement, three votes, and infrastructure financing and resilience, three votes. So those um that, yeah, that was five. So that was kind of handy that it came out to five. Thank you for submitting your votes. If you want to discuss those more. We can, or if you think maybe. Um you know, if you want to add any, I'll let you guys discuss it, but that is how the votes came out and if it's um, there's consensus, then we'll go ahead and. Enter those in. There's a electronic ballot we're supposed to fill out, but.
Yeah, that's been extended up to the eight.
Yeah, I tell you, yeah, to the nineteen. So we could, if you want to come bring it back on the meet, to the meeting on the eighth. Um we could do that. Um so we're not in as much of a rush as I thought we were, but. Um it was, it seemed. Like, it was nice to see your priorities and there's, there's a few outliers there, but um a lot of them really stacked up as being similar, so.
Everybody comfortable?
I'm good.
Yeah.
All good. Katie, you good?
I think this list is very uh reflective of our city and I love it.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. I forgot to tell you that I emailed that to you, Katie.
Yeah.
No, I I got it before the meeting. I already, I was, I was reading it as you were. Yep, it's all good.
Perfect. Okay, great. Okay, so if there's consensus, we'll go ahead and get these votes entered into the L O C ballot and they'll quit sending us reminders and worrying about us.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Right, next on my list, I have ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight. An ordinance granting the non-exclusive cable service franchise to Comcast of Oregon two uh Inc. So.
Okay, and we have Tim Goodman on Zoom with us. He did not think he was going to make it, but there were some changes in his schedule. So if anybody has any questions, he's here to answer those questions. Thanks for uh joining us, Tim. Um.
You bet.
We did, and we did, as you requested, highlighted the sections that we added in yellow in the franchise. Uh which spoke to the um Last Mile, that's called.
Yeah.
Um so if there's any questions for me or Tim, I'll let you discuss it and otherwise I'm confident about it now.
I think everybody here, does everybody have a chance to read it over? I read it from cover to cover and Tim, I'm glad you made those changes. It fixes that last mile change was really important, so thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'll have a question.
Yeah, I I was just gonna say, I I looked up other ones too. It's verbatim, like with Clackamas Counties as well too, so it it just brings us in line with surrounding areas.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh this is Tim. Uh sorry to 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 jump in. Yeah, to uh thank you, counselor, for bringing that up. Yeah, that, we did take that right out of the Clackamas County. Uh franchise agreement. And as a note on that, Clackamas County last week approved an amendment to their franchise, which is going to allow us to build into Eagle Creek. So that build out would be the same time as we would build out Estacada. There was a question at the last meeting about timing, uh how long it would take and so on. Uh from, in talking to our construction engineering folks, from the time the franchise becomes effective. Which is thirty days after your second reading. Um it would take eighteen uh months for all of the planning, design permits and construction for the entirety of the city.
Sure. Um I forgot to do this before we started discussing this, but I have to recuse myself due to conflict of interest.
Thank you for that. Any questions? All right, I think we're comfortable um with the whole thing. I think everybody's had a chance to read it over. It'll be nice to have, you know, choices and. As we're growing, so we we appreciate that. Tim, we appreciate you being able to show up. Last time I talked to you, we weren't sure you were gonna make it, so. Good to have you here.
Oh, you bet. Thank you for having me.
You bet. All right, so what do you need from us?
Okay, if you want to approve it, then you just move to approve that ordinance by title.
Okay, can we get a motion on the floor, please?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight and ordinance granting a non-exclusive cable service franchise to Comcast of Oregon. To.
Okay, I have first, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
All those opposed? Hey, motion passes, thank you. Okay, next we're at ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one one. An ordinance declaring a temporary ban on psilocybin service centers and manufacturing of psilocybin products. So I'll let you speak to this really quick.
Okay, I'll try to speak quickly and then just let you discuss. This um came up very quickly on my radar. Um because the rest of the city managers in Oregon were discussing it on the listserv and. So um at first I thought, I'm not really concerned about that, but then as more and more cities were concerned, I thought, okay, maybe we should take a closer look, which is why I sent you. Um information in my Friday report a week or two ago. Um and we did have a counselor who wanted to discuss it. Um I don't have a lot of concerns about this, but the new, the the new law M one oh nine um gives. It's for um psilocybin services for, from what I understand, mental health treatments, which have been. Um relatively, I I hear positive things, just anecdotally, I haven't done research on that, but. Um the law also gives municipalities a limited ability to control psilocybin within city limits. Um but if we want to put a two, we can put a two-year moratorium on the ballot. Or we can um do a prohibition of it, but I don't feel like, I felt that, like that was just like jumping over the cliff. So this two-year moratorium um would allow O H A to finish getting their rules together by the end of the year and then they're going to start issuing licenses, it sounds like in January. Um but they would not allow them to, the service centers to be in Estacada. Um and also the manufacturing would not be um. Would not be allowed in Estacada. Those are the two things that we can control and that would be a two-year moratorium. This, or if it's approved by the voters, and if it is approved, then this ordinance would end in two years. Um so we'd have to gear up to figure out what do you, is it working well? Is it, you know, is it. Fine to have that in the city? Is it work good for Estacada? Um or do we need, do we need to do some zoning regulations or do we want to ban it? But it would give us some more time, but it does need to go on the ballot in November. Um which means Sadie has some work to do to get it going of this in August. Um if you are, if you want to. Do that two-year moratorium, so I'm gonna let you guys discuss.
Who put that, they already put that on the moratorium from what I understand.
They're gonna go to the vote for the mo- moratorium in Clackamas, okay?
Alright.
Any other questions or information to share?
No.
I'm, I'm in favor for the moratorium and then taking it to the, to the voters.
Okay. Is that comfortable for everyone?
Yeah. Have, have we heard from the sheriff at all on this?
No, I did not seek his wisdom on this, about it.
I, I initially was very neutral on this. I, I I would have gone for acceptance, no action, but I did speak with one of the uh county commissioners over the weekend and. Um you know, they took action on this as well too and um this person had mentioned that that they had heard from sheriffs. Offices in support of this as well too. There's no. There's no solid guarantee that there will be anything in place by the end of this year. It's their target date. That um that they're planning on getting some sort of regulations in there. Um so just based on some of that, I I would lean towards as well to taking it to the voters too.
Okay. Sure, you're comfortable with that. Katie, you comfortable with that?
Um I'll, I like the idea of a moratorium better than like an outright prohibition. Um I I I probably would have never said acceptance, no action. I would have been more like around the three regulation. You know, um city putting limitations on place, time and manner. But if we are in a two-year moratorium period, then that gives us as a council two years to develop those time, place and manner. Uh limitations, so I would be in favor of that if the voters were in favor of that.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So I guess we're at that point. So you want a motion in play?
Yes, and just one last um item to share. During this meeting, it's in the staff report, but the, in the twenty twenty election, like we weren't, Estacada voters weren't swinging one way or the other. It was very close. It was. Uh one thousand ninety-eight yes votes to approve the psilocybin services and then one thousand one hundred sixty-two no votes, so basically. Um sixty-four vote difference and who knows how that would sway now. So there's, so there's no, I mean. There's no guarantee on how the voters are gonna feel, um but it's relatively inexpensive to put it on the ballots. Um and so just, I just wanted to point that out. And so in the, if you want to do this, we just need the motion to approve the ordinance. And the will, staff will work to get that um ready to go on the ballot.
So I moved.
Uh I, I think we have to read that one out, because nobody read it.
Okay, yes, alright.
I move to approve ordinance two zero two two dash zero one one and ordinance declaring a temporary ban on.
Psilocybin.
Psilocybin service centers and the manufacturer of psilocybin products.
Okay, great.
Second, I was trying to avoid to say it.
Um we'll do a roll call vote on that one. It's gonna go to the voters.
Good idea.
Okay. Counselor Dunsborough?
So a yes vote means that we're going to the voters, right?
Yes.
Okay, then yeah.
Counselor Hughes?
Aye.
Counselor Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Strobel?
Aye.
Counselor Ten Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Drinkling?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next on my list. Is the nonprofit agreement and processes. Now, this is something you want to explain, right?
Yes, we go from topic to topic so quickly and change my brain every time. Okay, so this is a discussion. Um that's um. Let's see. Just kind of go through the staff report quickly. Uh basically funds were budgeted towards tourism and Meals on Wheels in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And um staff has been working on agreements to put in place because the tourism was being um, was partnering with the Chamber of Commerce. And Meals on Wheels is provided by the Estacada Community Centers, where we were partnering with the community center for the Meals on Wheels services. Um and so we've been working on agreements with them. They're in the packet. Um I am, I'm very comfortable now that we have these agreements that we could put in place. Um if the council is willing to do that. Um. There has been discussion about um developing a new process for distributing those budget, budgeted funds. Perhaps putting out an application to see if there's other nonprofits in Estacada who do tourism work and have the appropriate tourism connections and. Knowledge um to be able to to do tourism work in Estacada, which we could do an application for that and same for Meals on Wheels. Um. They're very. Uh specialized, and I noted that in the staff report that um. Both of those programs, the tourism program and the Meals on Wheels program are very specialized and require established relationships, like for instance, the. Community Center uh works very closely with the county. Elena and I were down there looking at their work and the reports that they submit and the, they're, they're linked. Closely with the county and the work that they do. Um and so. I don't really see other um other applicants popping up, especially for them. Maybe for tourism, somebody might want to try that and maybe there is other nonprofits in Estacada, uh but like, for example, the um. The Chamber of Commerce works with Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs, Oregon Mountain Territory. Hood Gorge Territory, Oregon's, Oregon's Travel and Tour Alliance places I am not even familiar with. Um so they do, they have a lot of. Um connections and things they developed over the past years to do this work. So I am comfortable and especially for this year, I would hate to yank the rug out from under them, so I'd like to go ahead with the, with the agreements this year, but that will be up to you. Um and so I'll let you guys discuss it. I know especially Counselor Littkey was really wanting to be transparent. And he felt that application process would really allow for that, so maybe I'll let him lead the conversation. Um e- even if we do go with just um, our attorney said we can do these agreements as formal or informal as we want. Um and even if we do go with the formal agreements, perhaps um evaluating the amount of support for tourism we have now that we're getting past COVID. Past the fires, the rivers opened up again. I know there's no campgrounds up there, but maybe we won't need to put as much into tourism. And that might be a consideration, especially towards the end of the year or beginning when we're doing goal setting. Um you know, that you can give staff direction on that, but I'll let you take it over, discuss how you want the process to go. And um you can give me some direction on that.
Alright, please.
Cool. Alright, um as you know, I brought this up before. My, my goal here is to have an uh equal access approach to it. Transparent, accountable. Yes, it may be legal for us to just have the agreements in place. But by putting a process in place that allows anybody who might meet the requirements to apply for it. Means that we have an equitable access to that position. It takes that out of there as an issue. So for example, if a business or nonprofit has the ability to provide, now either now or in the future. The ability to provide those tourism services, they have an equal opportunity to access those funds or to apply for those funds. As much as anyone else. So by putting a process in now. We remove the ability for that to be an issue later. Basically, we're fixing the problem now. We've identified it. It's out here in the open. We have the ability to simply put something in place, move forward and we don't have to think about it in the future, because it's, it's a process that's there and that goes. For any of the grant programs, all the other nonprofits in the city have to apply for a grant that to go through a process. Meals on Wheels, yes, it's a very specialized program. There's a chance that we may never have another program. Outside the community center, but we don't know that. What if another program comes in somehow and meets that requirement or something changes in the future? By simply allowing them to apply for a grant, it shows that we're doing the job to be equal and equitable in our access to these, to these funds without. Presenting any sort of, what could be accused as favorism, even though it may not be, it may be a good practice, but that takes that off the table altogether if we just fix it. Basically require a process. That's kind of my, my approach to this one is that. We take anything that we have those type of approaches to. If we identify them, we remove them. So, and I mean, that goes with any interaction that we have. It's not a government-based facility. For example. We have the Chamber of Commerce in the actual building. But no other nonprofits have the same access to that type of approach and so that we need to be equitable in that type of approach. And either if we're going to offer space to a nonprofit, it needs to be offered to all nonprofits or to none, no nonprofits. I know that we're already running out of space in the city, so a good approach would be to having the Chamber of Commerce. Relocate by the end of the year or something like that, so they can get their own place in the community. And uh the city to be the city and a government entity to be a government entity and then all the other nonprofits that we're, or organizations to have. An equal process in how they access government resources without any sort of. You know, leaning one way or prearrangements, it's all equal access to it and that's all I'm trying to do is put that in place. Which, that's why we have the D E I Cs to try to fix those problems and things. And this is just one way you can, we can fix that.
Yeah. That does fall.
Yeah, so I, I agree, I agree with you on, on everything except for moving the chamber out of the, out of City Hall. I think that uh. You know, in a lot of, a lot of small towns across the country, uh Chamber of Commerce is very, is tied very um closely with City Hall. Um so I mean, I agree with you on every, on every other aspect, you know, from an equity standpoint, having an application process is, is. You know, it's the best way to go, because we don't, we don't know if there's somebody out there that, you know, has the ability right now or in the near future to provide these services, so. But um, yeah, I mean, I, I have absolutely no problem with the application process. I think it's a um a great idea. I support it from the, you know, first time you recommended it.
Katie?
Um, I will say that the thing that shocked me the most looking at this packet was seeing the um, the previous year's budget allocations for. Both the Chamber of Commerce and the Friends of Community Center, but really the, the Chamber of Commerce. Um. I, I, I guess I, I saw no uh logical reason for the exponential growth year after year after year. We went from giving them. Seventeen hundred dollars in two thousand and fifteen to seven years later, giving them twenty-five thousand dollars. And I guess I, as a, as a commissioner, as a counselor and as a citizen, I guess I, I don't see. Why that exponential amount of growth happened in the budgeting for it. So that being said, I, for that reason, completely agree with the idea. Of um, a, a, a process of, you know, bidding for certain services. Now, for the Friends of the Community Center, that's very easy, explainable. It looks like for the last uh four or five years, we've been giving them ten thousand dollars even specifically for our Meals on Wheels program. I think if we entered into an agreement with our sort of what you would call a preferred vendor for that certain program, I wouldn't be opposed to. I wouldn't be opposed to entering into some sort of a you you know, an ad hoc with something with a sunset date agreement with them to provide that certain service. But you know, when we talk about the Chamber of Commerce that's supposed to be promoting tourism and things like that, my understanding at the base level of the Chamber of Commerce is that they promote that level of tourism for the members that pay into it, that pay into that system. They're already paying for a service. Um you know, if you're a business and you're a member of the Chamber of Commerce, you're paying them membership dues. And in exchange, you get certain benefits, certain advertisements or promotions. And you know, accesses to resources and things like that, which is great for the members. And I don't wanna see the Chamber of Commerce go away because I think that it provides a service. But at the same time, when I as a citizen am looking at, you know, the historical ba- budget allocations for the Chamber of Commerce, I guess my big question is, what is the city, not just the individual businesses that are participating in the Chamber of Commerce, but what is the greater city of Estacada receiving for these for these additional funds? And if maybe the Chamber of Commerce didn't limit their promotion of businesses um or nonprofits or whatever, if they didn't limit it to just their members, then I could see the benefit. Because the city is giving them money to ben- to promote the entire city and not just the membership within that group. But if they're going to have exclusivity at the same time as participation in in the city or, you know, uh being at this close of level with us as the city of Estacada, um then you you have to get rid of that exclusivity. You can't be inclusive and exclusive at the same time, is I guess what I'm trying to get at. And with the Chamber of Commerce being its own kind of exclusive uh organization, I have a harder time seeing them as inclusive for the whole city. And because of that reason, I would be okay with us entering into an agreement to share office space in exchange for, you know, like promoting the 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 brochures or whatever is in this agreement. Um I I'm looking at it right now and I'm mi- losing the uh the verbiage that's in here. But if all we're expecting them to do is stock the brochures and and keep up with the tourism signs, I mean, I I just personally, I I I I like Joel Littkey's uh idea of having a little bit more separation from the city and a private organization that is exclusive. And I would be supportive of really whatever this council agrees to, but I would like to see a little bit more separation for that reason.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody else over here?
I I was uh definitely torn on this one. I from my standpoint, it's it's working fine as is. I understand the concerns uh very much, though, about separation and uh equity and allowing other people to um put in for this. So I I I'm I'm torn on this one, to be honest with you. I understand from what our uh lawyer said, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but it's very customary for it's not unusual for other cities to do what we are doing with the chamber as well. So there's nothing out of the ordinary here. Having the agreements in place, I think helps with that. Um and then to to have another group come in year after year. I mean, this thing could turn over every single year, really, i- if we do something like this, then they'd be reinventing the wheel. And I don't know that that would be a service for Estacada either. Um but I think maybe a compromise would be to put in uh as Counselor Dunsmear said at one point, a a sunset date on one. Maybe a compromise would be we enter into a longer term agreement with uh these individuals, maybe a three-year, five-year, ten-year type thing. And work from that standpoint, that allows other people to come to us at particular times and put in for the funds um and carry on those duties as well too. So that's that'd be my two cents there. But otherwise, I I'd be in support of of what the council decides on this one.
Um I am in favor of, I'd like to see if there are other groups out there that could access these funds. But I do agree with you, Counselor Strobel, that maybe doing this year after year might get a little bit that we maybe should look at maybe a three-year plan or something. That's that is a good point, and I would agree with you on that for sure. Um I'm still kind of fuzzy on the relationship with the chamber and the city and I'm like you, I'm torn. I know other cities kind of have this weird little marriage with the chamber and the city. But um I would like to see some more transparency between the two. And I would like to see all of this money um be available for other groups that could access it, so.
I'm gonna speak to you and then I'll let you speak, okay? Uh my opinion on this this subject is I've been a driver for the chamber for many years. I've been a member for twenty years. Um I love the chamber and it does a lot for our community, but the research you're talking about, I did research how many cities have their chamber in their city. Hardly any, because there are things that go on in a city where we all work under one umbrella for the citizens. Okay, of our 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 community, whereas the chamber works for its members that pay into the chamber. So it's a different sense of loyalty. Um at the end of it, if they pay their hundred and twenty-five bucks a year to be a gold member, they get all the advertisement that they need. That's that's great. That's what they should be doing. But does it go with the city where we represent everyone and everyone falls under that umbrella? I don't think it does. So what I mentioned to Melanie is we can support the chamber. I'm I'm apt to figuring out something that works if they wanna put out for it, and we do that. But not having them in City Hall and letting them be in the center of our city where they promote would be a better idea for them and for us, because we are growing. Our city is growing. We are looking for office space all over this building, trying to fit everything in it, and we have to look at that as well. So I would hope that that would be our first concern. The city is growing. We need to have room for the offices here for the people that are working here. And, you know, helping the chamber, I'm not against. I I think we always should and have a great relationship with them, because that's what they're about. But exclusive, not so much so.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Uh you said a lot of what I was gonna say. Um a good example of a city that recently removed the chamber from their city hall would be Sandy. They a few years back, they took this the Chamber of Commerce out and they moved them into a different part of the city. And cities are doing this more often now. I went and did a research on basically cities not only our size, but larger cities. There's barely any have have them in there, and some of them have them on the table to remove them out of the city because a separation is required. Because they have a job to promote the people that are their members over the job of which we had we had to basically represent everybody. And they can't do that, because like she said, it's you can't be both ex- inclusive and exclusive. And um well, I I get what you're saying as far as the um to basically execute a longer term, you have a good point there. And so there's ways we can approach that, either by having like a two or three-year term on there or we as a city present the goals that we have and what we're looking for for tourism. And then whether it's company or B, they have to basically explain how they're gonna march to either on a year-by-year or if it's multi-year, whatever, how they're gonna achieve those goals. And it could, it may not be a bad thing to have them mixed up from one year to the next, as long as they're marching towards towards our goals as a city that we set. And because sometimes, what if we have, what if we put a three-year goal to a certain contract? And then we find out they're not executing those goals well, then we're stuck for three years. Whereas if we have a year-by-year, then they could potentially have a change, someone that could execute our our goals better. And so that's one of the things we have to consider is what's better to be stuck in one or have the ability to maybe offer that up or another company might come in and change it. So that's just what's something to think about when we're considering.
Okay, any more comments to that before we move on?
Yeah, I just thought I'd share just a couple of things regarding the office space. Um it has been great having the chamber here over the years. Um and they were very gracious when they kept getting less premium office space. Um because we are growing and so that is I have the um in your your packet is the agreement for the um for office space for a year. But um I have had that conversation with um the president of the chamber and saying, we're gonna need this space. We don't wanna boot you to the curb, um but you need be looking for um someplace else. And I think being in the center of downtown would be great. I know that it's difficult. They they've looked so far, you know, to try to find a small space that they could rent and haven't had much luck. And so I think it's gonna take a little creativity, maybe a little time. But um I did set, unless you want to change this, um I set a goal with them that they by the end of the fiscal year, they would have someplace else. And if they can, if they find someplace sooner um and are able to manage it, then I think that that would be their goal also. Um but they've looked at multiple options as far as um how to make that work. And so but it is a conversation that we've had and they're agreeable to that. Um and then it would be, I've talked with um just gotten some feedback from another city. And they said, you know, you could do a a letter of in- interest, just put out a call for a letter of interest and how you would um how other nonprofits would meet these priorities that we have for tourism. Um so it could be like a a one-page application in their letter of interest to apply. We could go one year, three year. I'm hearing what it sounds like. Um you would like to make a change to the process. We just need to figure out what that is um so that it's feasible. I think um the um going for multiple years allows them to plan a little longer term. Because sometimes it takes things, you know, a little while to take hold, but I am hearing that it sounds like you wanna make a change. Um another option um that I was told about is that in some ci- in at least this one city that I was talking to, they have um groups that they want to support ongoing. And so they'll formalize that in a resolution, like if you wanna support um whoever is providing the Meals on Wheels program. Um or if you wanna support the food bank, or if there's other, you know, if there's organizations that are, you want to be long-term partners, we could formalize that. And that way, it's um it's not just hidden in the line in the budget. It's out there as a resolution. So that's another option, but um so I guess my questions are um what kind of a process should this be and it's and um like how formal, how extensive a process? And can we start that for the next fiscal year? Do you want me to start it right now um with the I know that those that the chamber and the and the um community center are well, well into their budgetary year as far as planning that started several months ago. And so um I have a concern about making a change midstream, but whatever you feel.
Um yeah, uh as far as the timing, I think since it's well, good to consider their fiscal budgets and stuff that they have. I think it's we were focusing on ours. We need to take that into consideration. We haven't issued the money yet. We have a time to put a process together and and issue one. Um I think one of the key things in the process should be is identifying how they would plan to use that money to fulfill the requirements of the city for tourism. So that way, that's transparent to anyone who's looking at this later, the people wanna see how the money's going. I mean, even Counselor Dunsmear mentioned she wanted to see how them what where the money is going as it grew over the years. So it can answer those questions. They can say, we're gonna do X, and this is what that money will be used for. So I think that would be a big thing to put in that process, but I definitely think uh we haven't issued the money yet anywhere, so I think we should put that in the process before we do. Is, you know, fix it now going forward.
Different thought on that. We've we're into our fiscal year already, correct? So they've already submitted their budget. We've submitted our budget. We've approved the budget as well too. A- and they're anticipating this. This is part of their budget as well. So my thought is we continue as we had planned uh moving forward with this year. Uh but to have a more formalized process going forward would be something that I would like us to discuss at a future date to make sure we're ready for the future. My thoughts there.
Um Jerry, I agree with Paul. Okay, Katie.
I also agree with Paul. Um and I just wanted to throw out uh this conversation reminds me a lot of uh franchise agreements. You know, we have to update our franchise agreements that we have every couple of years with our garbage providers, with our internet providers and, you know, television providers. A lot of our providers, we go into periods of franchise agreements with. And I'm thinking, you know, when we talk about Meals on Wheels, if we need to enter into some sort of a franchise agreement with our preferred Meals on Wheels, you know, executive team or whatever you wanna call them. Um I think that a franchise agreement conversation might be appropriate here moving forward. Um so that when you guys are ultimately approving anything in the future, because it's probably not gonna come across the desk while I'm sitting in that chair, which is fine. Um but when you guys have future conversations, having that structured a little bit more like a franchise agreement might make this conversation uh easier and more transparent.
Anybody else?
I I could see the um the tourism set kind of like a franchise agreement. That makes more sense. I don't see so much as the Meals on Wheels being a franchise agreement. I see that it's more of a grant. Um and I I get we can have something where we have a resolution to it. So um but I think that resolution def- should definitely have a sunset clause and that they every few years we had to renew it or something, so.
I can appreciate that. Um I'm I'm comfortable with uh the end of the fiscal budget that they have already said. We've both said, I don't wanna be the person that says, here, chamber, find your way. Um it's been a good relationship and I want to continue to be so, so giving them the opportunity to find a place that works for them. And uh we figure out the paperwork behind the services that they're they're giving us now and and everything that's involved in that, I think is only fair. So for us to sit here and and just say, hey, it's over, um no. Um it's been happening for a few years now and and I think the best way to handle this is just to slow down. Let them have an opportunity to get a place that works for them, relationship solid, we work closely with them, you know, the same as we've always done. It's just in a way that works better for everyone. So I think that's fair. So is there anything you need?
Charity wanna weigh in at all?
I would agree with that. I don't wanna like pull the rug out from underneath them, you know, I I'd like to give them the end of the fiscal year. But I would like piggyback off of what Paul was saying, um you know, just have there be a little bit more formality and structure to where the funds are going, just a little more transparency throughout the year.
And that's an issue, right?
So I'll put that agreement, the agreement that's in the packet. Um I'll review that one more time and um the chamber board has reviewed that already also um to be able to. So we'll get we'll get some structure to this year, and then it sounds like what I'm saying, what we're what I'm hearing is um we need to talk about this more, process more, so we can get that in place. Um I think that's a good idea. Um I also think that um we've been in a couple of odd years. And I'll I'll own it that when we were putting the budget together, I didn't change a lot, because I was coming in as like this is literally going um into the proposed budget right now. And so I didn't change a whole lot. Probably I should have taken a look at that, say, hey, we are coming out of COVID, we're coming pacifiers, the highways opened up now. There's um you know, maybe that was an excessive amount to continue to to provide for tourism work. But I will say that um the work the chamber's been doing lately with getting TV shows out here, um doing interviews with um business owners and taking them up the river and uh there's just been a, I think there's things going on, you know, that I don't even know. I'm not even aware of the connections that are happening. That's really, um they've really been doing a good job. Um so anyway, it's I will own that, that I probably should have looked at it closer going into the budget, maybe made a different recommendation on that amount. Um as we've seen, we've kinda we kinda came to a peak and now, you know, but we'll talk about it later, the process and what the budget looks like for how much we wanna allocate towards tourism, possibly go uh picking up that transient lodging tax. That would be um seventy percent of that has to go towards tourism specifically. And so, I mean, that could be maybe not a lot right now as far as um like lodging that we have in Estacada. Um but that's probably, it's probably a whole part of that discussion, so.
Okay, so we'll bring this back, I'm sure.
So I'll put those agreements in place, start working on a process, and then we'll um especially coming towards the end of the year, start to talk about that again. So as we cross the new year and people look towards next year's budget, we we know that there's um there's definitely a um application or something. It's not just a given. Um okay, right. We'll do it. Thank you for all of that insight and direction.
And I think you had um a council goals and updates, but is there any way we could move that?
Yeah, you know.
To the next, because I mean
Absolutely, it's in the packet. I was really only gonna highlight a couple of things, but as I I kept turning the page, I'm like, but wait, there's more. And it's just such a massive list, but if anybody has any questions about those, I tried to put in the status column on the right. You know, things that were going on or things that have been completed, and so you can feel free to call me, email me. I could talk about it next time too.
Okay, great. We'll do that. We'll bump that to the next. Is that okay with everybody? All right, we are at the nexus and give me community group comment. I think I have a few over here.
Typically, we, I think part of the rules is that you speak once, then you don't speak again. But I know this is, this is a hard thing going on here that we want and everybody wants to be understood, so.
Hey, Tracy.
Hi, I'm Tracy Uvi and I live in Campanella. I just wanted to touch back, go back to what you guys talked about earlier with Brent on getting together and sitting at the roundtable and kind of really hashing out what's going on with Park. Can we get a commitment out of that, that it will happen in the near future?
When we say near, it's, it's gonna happen as soon as we can put it together.
Okay, so you guys do have plans on doing that.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure I know talking about it's one thing.
What kind of a roundtable are we talking about?
Just a roundtable between. You know. And the city council.
I didn't have that on the, I did not have that on the horizon in the agendas coming up. But if that's a priority, I, I don't know if that would help or not. I, I was looking for them to make a recommendation to you. And then you take that recommendation. Well, I have to, I have to get them the information they need and so they can make a recommendation. I don't know if sitting around the table with Parks and Rec is gonna. Be that productive or what you guys are hoping for. I'm not sure.
They'll just put their recommendation to us and then we'll deal with it.
That's, that's, yes.
It just feels like there's this like, nothing's going on. Like it's just a kind of circle, like it's just, you know.
It's like, it's very slowly.
Well, and I understand it just seems, I mean, obviously from sitting back watching it, it just seems like it's a very, definitely very slow process. And we just want to see some kind of movement and commitment. And I understand that, you know, people want to bring in, that, you know, like Katie was saying, bring in the other citizens of Estacada, which is great. You know, if they want to be involved, then jump on board, get involved, be down here, be on Zoom, you know, be a part of it. Other people in Campanella want to do the same, then jump on board. But if you. I, I don't complain if you don't want to get involved, right? So be here, be present. And make a difference. That's, you know, how I feel about it. And then I wanted to just talk about, I know Melanie was talking about the code enforcement. And I actually was really excited to hear that just because I backed the park in Campanella. And Saturday night I had another 1:00 AM car parked outside with the cat torn off so I could hear it pull in. And, you know, waiting for the police and whatnot to come, but that's a, I'm really excited about that. So, yeah. And I think, yeah, I think that's it.
All right. Hey, that's Chris B. Blair.
Thank you for letting me speak again. I want to. Address one of Katie's comments about. The Campanella Park not being a neighborhood park, but being a city park. And I believe it is a city park. We have people from outside of our neighborhood who come in all the time. We see T-ball practice in the open space. There are many community events that occur. Throughout the year, so it is, we understand that it is not a neighborhood park, but it is a city park. And when these park, when this park discussion happened back in 2018. The majority of Campanella had not existed. So nobody, except for maybe phase one, got to put any input into the first phase of. The park and the planning of it. So for, yes, we haven't been here very long, but. I feel like we should still have a say because it is in our backyard and we are not saying the community cannot be part of it. But there needs to be a give and take. And where my safety and my privacy and my, I guess, noise is interrupted. I take that personally and that's not fair to me. I have two dogs. Who with, if we put in all these amenities are going to go crazy. They're not, we won't be able to keep, let our dogs go outside and play because of all the items that are going on in the park. And I'm not against it, the park in whole, but I am, do think that it does need to be. Addressed and some changes need to be made to the plan. As you say, things have changed in the last four years. So maybe the park needs to change some too. And if there is another place for a splash pad. That's, that's acceptable. I don't see why there's any problem with putting a splash pad somewhere else. Thank you.
All right, that's all the comments I have in front of me. Anybody online or? Okay, anybody wish to comment to anything? Yes. Well, I'm usually not supposed to speak out to the audience, but I'm gonna make an exception this time. Being here the longest, it was discussed to be in Wade Creek at one time. A while back, I don't know, it's the first couple of years that we had the discussion. And it was recommended by the group that built the park that that's not where it should go. But if you've been out there, which I have, and I've measured the little horseshoe pit and I was pretty surprised to see that it had grown up with weeds. And everything was all rusted out and it looked pretty bad. So I was like, well, what's stopping us from putting something here, even if it's temporary? But it solves the issue until we can find a location for a great water park, right? So it seemed like a win-win to me, but there's a lot of things and a lot of hoops to jump through, but. I'm hoping we get to a conclusion to this and I hope we have something wonderful to come back to you about. All right, thank you.
All right. I just want to chime in also. I, I know that it seems like, well, they're the inaction. I mean, you've seen that, you've commented on that as well too, but. Inaction does not mean full steam ahead either. There are a lot of this has been stalled on hold. So we can start working some of these issues out as well too. So when you see the. That nothing's changed on the plan, just or on the maps, the design, that just means it's, it's, it's because it's quite a process to get that physical. Design changed, but definitely things are not full steam ahead. Definitely, we're hearing you. Parks and Rec is hearing you as well too. And I would encourage folks. Come on out here, talk to, talk to us, let us hear thoughts, but really meeting with the Parks and Rec team as well too. They've got their meetings posted as well. I've seen, I've watched their videos and I know folks have shown up there as well. That's a great spot to talk with them and let them hear you too.
All right, any other comments? No, I'm not seeing Katie, any, any? All right, moving along. We are now at the mayor and council reports and we'll go into executive session after that. So you can start off with. You, Charity.
I'm glad to be back. Sorry, I missed last meeting. Daughter's Dance National, so it was a little bit more important, sorry. But glad to be back. Nothing really new to report on. It's summer, things have kind of slowed down as far as. Committee stuff goes, but I want to thank the community members for coming out tonight and speaking. I know it can feel very frustrating not seeing action right away. But it, it is a very, all these things are very lengthy and slow processes. Just looking at our wastewater treatment plant, just that in and of itself. That whole thing started when. I started and that was two years ago and we are still looking for a spot to move the plant. And I have a feeling will be, this will be going on just the wastewater treatment alone. Well past my time. So it's slow. All things are very slow. And so when you take a plan and then you have to rework it, it, it's, it's just, it's gonna take months. And I know that's like stinky news to hear, but just please be patient. And we do hear you. I just wanted to echo that from what the other counselors were saying. So. Thank you, Melanie, for being patient and gracious with us always and for the phone calls. And it's, it's really awesome to just kind of dig into the weeds with some of the stuff with you. On our phone calls. That way we're not kind of gumming up the meetings and such and. Thanks staff again for the packet and all you guys out here. I, I really appreciate all the input, all you counselors have to share. And those of you who have been on council long-term can just providing some of that wisdom and a little bit of backstory. On some of these issues that, you know, some of us are a little bit newer to or hadn't, hadn't visited yet. So appreciate you guys. And thanks for a good meeting.
Oh, well, I'm glad the meeting's kind of coming to the end because it's been a long day for me. Hey, first of all, thank you for everything, Melanie and Sadie. I know that I bug you guys a lot during the week, a lot of questions and things and. I know we got a lot of good things on here that we need to check off and that, you know, getting better, allow our officers to get those vehicles out and stuff is really good. With the, with the, I, I get the fact that things move slowly with government. I, I know that and. Sometimes I get done and one wants to push a little bit faster because, you know. I like, I like to see things get done and sometimes stalling doesn't make sense to me, but at the same time, it's, you know, I, I do get those processes for everything. I don't forget that. And for, but sometimes you can move fast. For example, the other day I, I called Melanie. Because I had a citizen reach out to me about the colonialness of Wade Creek Park. And while I was sitting with some citizens on Campanella, they were asking me questions regarding the weeds that were growing up in the common areas out there. Well, I gave her a call and said, hey, you know, I got this call about it, you know, what can we do about it? And she said, oh, I'll see, I can get, get on something, right? Well, the next day I get a call from the citizen and Wade Creek Park had been cleaned. And she was very happy, very excited about where we looked and I had, that later that day, I think that day or the next day I drove by. And the areas that Campanella had asked me about and they had, they'd been blowed down and weeded down and. And I was actually in shock and awe about how on the spot the public works was. And so I wanted to make sure I give them a shout out, be able to jump on something that quick. Soon as I let her know, she made the phone call and boom, they got it done. And I, I know that's, you know, some things can move fast and I really appreciated what they did there. And I know the citizens, they were calling me about it. But really appreciated it too. So definitely a shout out to them. So thank you, everybody for coming and sticking through this. I know there's a lot of stuff here. My poor wife is. Sitting over there and she's not, she didn't pay most of the day, so. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you guys the next time and, yeah.
I have one quick comment about public works because they are awesome and they have a huge list of stuff to get done in the summer. And so not to say that they didn't just jump right out there because you called, which they did. Because if they can resort, if something's bugging somebody and they can resort their things, like they have to grade the alleys, they have, they have, there's things. There's tons of right away work. There's all this list of stuff they have to do in the summer and they're on it, but you know, they're going in this order. And if it's something's bugging somebody though, they'll rearrange what they have to do to get that taken care of. And I just really appreciate them. Being flexible and how, and how they approach their work and really serving the community, so.
Major kudos to them.
I just want to thank the committees that showed up, that spoke to us as well too. And Melanie, you touched on this, these, these folks are volunteers. They, they live in the community just like us. They're trying to make decisions. With, with the community's best interest at heart as well too. And, and from what the folks that I know, they, they are here because they want to be here and they're just doing a great job. This is volunteer work. It takes time to get together. It takes time to, to make the decisions, to get input from folks as well too, especially for volunteers. I mean, no one's getting paid for this, just like us. We're, we're here. Because we want to see Estacada succeed as a city and do our, and, and do our best to help the city be its best as well too. So thanks for the committees and the volunteers and those people that are putting their time forward to help out with the city.
First off. Our, our city staff is amazing. This packet was really good. I had very, very few questions and. All my questions were answered. I can't remember the gentleman's name from the. TSP, but he had a, his presentation was great and on point. You know, there, I had, I literally had very few questions after that presentation too. So I just really appreciate the work you guys put in, all city staff, including public works. And I know I've said it before, but Elena was an amazing. Amazing addition to the city staff. She's a, at least from what I've seen, she's been, she's done a great job. You know, so thank you guys for coming, sticking it out with us. It's been a long meeting. And thank you counselors for some great discussion tonight. And I just really appreciate the input and the hours that we put in. Thank you.
You know, I don't want to continue beating the dead horse about how long government takes, but honestly. The government beats dead horses all the time, so I will too. You know, the, the government moves so slowly. I really wish people would give some level of grace and patience when working with the government. We're all on the same team trying to make Estacada the best place to live for everyone that's here. It took us three years to get that electronic reader board that, that sign that's in front of City Hall now. We had a citizen come to us in February of last year asking us to redo or relook at our marijuana ordinances. And it's, you know, it's August of 2022, so we're talking a year and a half later and we still haven't changed any of those ordinances. Things move very slowly sometimes and I think that we can all. Do ourselves as a city a huge favor by taking a breath. And instead of becoming upset or helping other people become upset. That we take a step back and we really try to address what the concerns are instead of just becoming angry about them. And I would really hope that moving forward, everybody sort of takes a step back, takes a deep breath. And then proceeds productively. That being said, I will close my comments tonight by also promoting the movie that was filmed last year. The government moves really slowly, so does Hollywood. If anyone remembers, there was a movie directed by Dave Franco. That took over a couple of locations in Estacada last year during the summertime. And that movie is finally being released on Amazon Prime. The release date is September 5th. And I am very, very excited that, that we're going to be seeing this movie for the, for the first time. And just really excited, again, government moves slow, so does Hollywood, but it looks like we're all going to get to see that movie pretty soon. So have a good night, everybody, and thank you for coming and expressing your concerns. Maybe we can again, all take a step back, take a deep breath and move together productively.
Thank you. Okay, what's the name of the movie?
Somebody I used to know. It's directed by Dave Franco and it's starring his wife, Alison Brie. And a couple of other cool players in Hollywood, including Haley Joel Osment, who, if you don't know, was that six-year-old kid from the. Or the, the kid from The Sixth Sense who saw Dead People. So I'm really excited. It's going to be a really cool movie and it'll be on Amazon Prime in September.
All right, thank you, Katie. All right, I guess it's to me now. I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I mean, this is pretty involved meeting. I thought it was going to be an easy in, easy out. Never. But I appreciate the process. I always have. The fact that you're able to speak on what you believe, we have to listen. And we have to make changes. It's everything I sit here for. And I told you this before, tell you again, I didn't get elected here because I woke up one morning and said, I want to be mayor. I got elected here because I wanted to give you a voice. Because I didn't have one when I was younger and my city went bye-bye. And I told the story, but it's true. So having that voice is very important and having the ability to voice yourself is everything. That's what gives us the freedom and makes America what it is today. So. That said, I appreciate each and every one of you. And just before we go for fellow counselors, I, I just read these. I'm hoping you guys will buy these. These are Robert's Rules of Order to make it easier on me. I know, it sounds horrible, but you know, they're great books and they tell you just when to speak and when not to. No, thank you. I appreciate all of you and staff. You're wonderful as always.
We're not going to adjourn.
We're going to go into executive session.
Yes, yes.
Yep, you had a two-minute break, please. Be a two-minute break.
Let's take a two, two or three-minute break and. Let's take a two, two or three minute break and we'll let everybody um say goodnight. And then we will move on to the executive session. Which hopefully.
How does this motion need to read?
That we move to.
Okay.
There we go.
I moved to approve the real property discussion as. Presented by staff.
And. And discussed in executive session.
And discussed in executive session.
Okay, so I have a first, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, there you are.
Right.
And this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, you want me to hang on to those?
Yeah, do you need these back?